This meeting in the city of Rickford, City Council, come forward. For the status of form.
Ken Pownal. Karen Lindblad.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Lady Balance.
I'm here.
Parker Raphael. Butch Berry. We have five. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move to approve.
Second. I'd like to add the 2013 parking lot lease on number six, new business, for 2013. Any further?
We're just going to-
Ms. Balance. There you go. Yes, ma'am.
For number seven, under new business, I would like to add a brief discussion of the Legislative Joint Auditing Commission Audit.
Any further? Yes, ma'am.
The special meeting minutes from 11:21?
Yes, that was the next item.
Okay.
That'll be added to the approval of the minutes in the next section. Any further? Ms. Balance.
I would like to delete item number three in our new business.
Second.
Any further? Ms. Balance.
Yeah, I'd like to delete number four. Under unfinished business.
Second.
Under unfinished? Any further?
Yeah.
Ms. Lind.
Yeah, I'd like to delete number two under new business.
Second.
Number two under new business is out. Any further? Mr. DeVino.
I'd like to delete item one under new business.
Your second?
Second.
Any further? Okay, just to go real quick, number four under unfinished. Number one, two, and three under new business. Any further? Yes, ma'am.
Number one, two, and three? It was three and four under unfinished, wasn't it? Under unfinished business, it was three and four. And then under new business, it's one, two-
And three.
And three?
Just four under unfinished.
The water rate's under unfinished.
No, we, um... Ms. Balance moved to delete number three under unfinished business.
No.
No, that's number-
Oh, three under new business.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'm doing, went back over, make sure everybody's on the same page.
So, number three on unfinished business is still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
No, number three under unfinished business is still on.
Yeah, unfinished business, okay.
Yes.
Parker, did you have? Did you have your hand up? No, okay. Any further? All in favor of accepting amended agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Change it, okay, thank you. Next would be approval of the minutes for 11:27 to 12?
Move to approve.
Your second? Any changes, deletions, additions?
Excuse me?
Eleven.
Eleven twenty-seven?
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-first?
The agenda has the wrong date, it says twelve.
Yes.
Should be twenty-seven.
And it should be twenty-seven.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next would be the special meeting minutes for 11:21 to 12?
Move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Any changes, deletions, additions? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain, I was not here.
You got it? Okay.
So, it's three...
Three yeses, one abstaining, and one no.
Correct. Three, zero, one.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Commission Committee Authority and Expired Terms. Planning Beverly, you're up.
I just want to let everyone know that beginning in January, the Planning Commission will have two open seats, and I hope that you will apply for those positions and help your community. Tomorrow, we have, we just have one meeting in December, and that's tomorrow. We have a public hearing for a CUP at 23 Hillside, and that's just because it was sold. And then we also have public hearing for some tree cuts at 579 West Van Buren. And also, a representative from SWEPCO will be there tomorrow night to speak to us, to talk to us about underground buried utility lines versus overhead. So, should be interesting.
Thank you, ma'am. If you've got anybody else here from any other commissions, from CUPs all the way down to cemetery. That would bring us up to public comments. No public comments? Okay. That'll move us on to unfinished business. Number one is the third reading of ordinance 2169 on the signed ordinance issue. Motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Say again.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVino.
I'll move to place ordinance number 2169 on its third reading by title only.
Your second. Yeah, we need to do a real call. Okay, real call.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Five-zero? Ordinance 2169 in ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code, subsection 7.52.03.
Mr. DeVino.
Move to approve ordinance number 2169 on its third reading.
Second.
Making second reading? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, we need real call on that one.
We got a dear one? Okay. Don't excuse me if I have to keep clearing my throat.
Balance, the rocks.
It's good to see you, Nathan.
Mr. Berry? Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Five-zero?
I've got plenty more, thank you. This one blew. Okay. Okay, move on to the next. Uh, next would be nominees for solid waste advisory meeting. I'm talking to some people, but I don't have them set yet, so... Had a lot of people ask me, well, very good. I'm just not ready, so... I don't discuss it further, floor is open to discussion.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Move to postpone, as told.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That brings us to number five. The three, I'm sorry.
Three.
Okay. Be cool with discussion on code 4.48, amending the city permitted indoor sanctioned, city sanctioned issues.
Move to discuss.
Second. Floor is open.
It's been a while since this has been back at your table, but we brought it to you in July. In our city code, when it talks about being able to sell items under tents and things, it says, the only thing that says can sell is city-sponsored events. All we're asking for you to do is to send this to your city attorney so that we can get this changed from city-sponsored to city-approved and permitted events. That's all we want. When we first brought it, we asked for the code to be changed in other areas, but now we're not.
Ms. Lind.
You're saying, it says on our agenda, city permitted or city sanctioned, so you're asking for city-approved and...
We asked for city-approved and permitted event. Mr. DeVito said that that city sanctioned means the same thing.
Oh, all right. So, what were you asking for, sponsored?
Whatever will pass this table and mean the same thing.
That's what's in there right now, sponsored.
Right, sponsored. And then we have here, city sanctioned.
Any further discussion on it? Mr. DeVino, or Mr. Brown, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to have the attorney draw up an ordinance changing sections 4.48.01 subsection D, where it says city-sponsored to city-approved.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Deleting number four, misses the number five, ordinance regulating the number of subordinate police officers. Question to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank our city attorney for preparing this document for us. Next, before we go any further with it, I've noticed just a few little typographical errors that we should probably clear up before we go any further with this. To wit. An ordinance setting the maxim, maximia? It probably should be maximum, M-A-X-I-M-U-M. Number of subordinate police officers fought? Probably should be four, the city of Eureka Springs? Okay, so far? Okay, section one. Where it talks about, it is hereby authorized that the number, the word "the" should be inserted there. Section two, that in addition to said number of, so in addition to, okay. Section three. I question the semicolon behind the word ordinance in the second line of that paragraph. I think it probably should be a comma, although I'm not positive about that. Then we come on down and it says, okay, no replacement. Officers may be hired. A "D" needs to be on hired. Until the total number of, the word "of" needs to be there before officers. And at the end of that sentence should probably be a period. Okay. Then I would move to assign a number to this ordinance and put it on its first reading.
Second.
Mr. DeVino. This is just where you know this is.
Discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Yeah, I think this is superfluous. We've got an attorney general's opinion that says, basically, his response in this is that, and the whole thing came up that we were supposed to be against the law because we didn't set this by ordinance. And the attorney general's opinion says that, in his opinion, the city council is not required to set the number of offenders, officers by separate specific ordinance. And it goes on down in three there. And this was a response from, uh, from Bob Johnson, Speaker of the House, at that time, in 2000, year 2000. And it goes on, and I think most of the council members already have this, if I'm not mistaken, this was sent to you. And so, again, I think this is just a superfluous ordinance that we don't need to get into. And setting things that we can get into, setting a number that we may end up changing one way or the other. And I think it's getting into, again, trying to get into, we set this, and I've said this before, when we do the budget. And if there's a problem, then that's when we need to deal with it. We don't need to deal with it with an ordinance. Because, and once again, the attorney general's opinion says, what we have is fine.
The way I read the attorney general's opinion says, if you pass your budgets by ordinance, and we have not passed our budgets by ordinance for some time, and so, actually, that's not cutting the mustard. So, in the event of, in the hopes of trying to move this along and trying to come into compliance with the law, I would suggest that our chief of police did indeed supply us with, with his reasoning why he needs the officers that he has. So, I think we should give some credence to what he has said because, of course, he has a pretty good idea of what he needs. So, I suggest that perhaps we should set a number. Right now, he has the chief, he has two detectives, and seven patrol officers. That is, would be nine subordinate officers. And when I look at the budget resolution, I notice that he is asking for eighty thousand dollars more in the budget line for the police department. So, that indicates to me, either he's perhaps anticipating adding an extra officer or two, or maybe one extra officer and some pretty exorbitant raises for the police department. But be that as it may, he has nine right now, and that's what he feels he needs. He may be thinking about adding another one or two. So, perhaps we should set this number at nine, or eleven, or fifteen, or twenty-five. I think it would be good for us to set a number and get this going down the road so that we can get in compliance and have something there. And indeed, some other city council may come along and say, well, gee, we need more, or the town's gone bad and we don't need quite as many. But that would be for city councils in the future to decide. So, I think I would recommend that in this, section one, we fill in the blank where it says, no more than one chief, and let's try to decide on a number there. He has nine right now. He may be wanting to have another one or two, so maybe it should be eleven, or twelve, or fifteen, for a total of fifteen or sixteen. I mean, let's give him what he needs. Let's give him what he needs to do the job, and set it, set it so it is, that is what it is. Because as I said, we do not pass our budgets by ordinance any longer, and so, we're not covered in that respect. So, please work with me here.
Mr. Berry.
Well, we did pass it at times by ordinance, and so, I think that's a ridiculous argument. And I would like to see us go ahead and try, if Ms. Balance wants to pass this, let's pass it first and come back to the numbers. And let's see if this thing's going to fly before we even get into the discussion about how many numbers and how many police officers there should be. Because I'm still not convinced we even need the ordinance. And I'm not going to vote for it.
Passing this ordinance is clumsy. And that being that the simple solution is to pass our budgets by ordinance. Otherwise, we're going to have to constantly be redoing this ordinance time and time again as the number of officers change. So, it's much more streamlined and much more efficient to just pass our budgets by ordinance.
Anybody else? Ms. Balance.
Our city attorney, with his knowledge of writing ordinance and so forth, has written this up, I think, quite well. And it says, section one says that it is hereby authorized that the number of certified and sworn officers for Eureka Springs Police Department shall be limited to no more than one chief and however many subordinate officers. So, we could set it at twelve, or fifteen, or twenty-five, or a hundred subordinate officers. It shall be limited to no more than. It doesn't mean that he has to have twenty-five, or fifty, or a hundred. It means that what the budget will support, he could go up to that. So, I don't understand why there's so much resistance to having this. If it was twenty-five officers, that would certainly take him well into the future, and we would not have to address this again until such time as he felt he needed more than twenty-five officers.
Mr. DeVino.
With all due respect, we're not in the capability of predicting the future as to how many officers. And to just pick an arbitrary number out of thin air, it doesn't do us well to be functioning in that capability. We will know next year, or we know when the budget is presented, how many officers are going to be requested. All we've got to do is ask the chief how many he needs, and we can write it in and pass it by ordinance. This, in my opinion, is just an exercise in futility. It serves no purpose. It is cumbersome and it's inefficient.
Lindblad.
Well, according to what I see in the coming budget, the police department is increasing its budget by one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and... Oh, no, I'm sorry, by, yeah, one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And I have never known a time so far when we decreased the police budget. So, I think it is a good idea for us to pass this ordinance and say how many officers, because obviously, this is not being done by the budget. And, you know, we're sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars away from having a one million dollar police budget. And as I said, I've never seen us decrease the budget. So, I don't think that the number of officers or the department is being controlled at all by the budget. So, I think that this is a good idea, and if it needs to be amended, then it can be amended. But, but it's not being done by the budget, whether we pass the budget by ordinance or whether we don't pass the budget by ordinance.
Anybody else? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to assign this ordinance a number. Oh, all right, then, I'll... Is that motion still on the table?
I already did this, initially, I was saying. To assign a number.
It does need a second?
Yes.
Second.
The ordinance number will be 2171. Ordinance 2171 in ordinance setting the maximum number of subordinate police officers for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas Police Department. Whereas the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current and future police staffing needs of the city, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one. That it is hereby authorized that the number of certified and sworn officers for the Eureka Springs Police Department shall be limited to no more than one chief and blank subordinate officers for a total of blank officers with general law enforcement powers. Section two, that in addition to said blank certified and sworn officers with general law enforcement powers, the department may employ or have as many dispatchers, animal control officers, reserve officers, and other support personnel as the police chief shall believe is needed and can be accommodated by the approved city budget. Section three, that should the current number of certified and sworn officers be greater than the number hereby approved and set by this ordinance, it shall remain lawful for the police department to continue to employ all current numbers, members. No replacement officers may be hired until the total number of officers shall be reduced to a number below the approved number hereby authorized by natural attrition. Section four, repeal clause. All ordinance's resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVino. Ms. Lind, are you here?
Yeah, I am. Okay, um, I make a motion that we... In section one, that we make it eleven subordinate officers. Eleven subordinate officers for a total of twelve officers, I guess, because you would include the police chief. And eleven in section two.
Second.
Will it?
That would be inconsistent, really. It'd be eleven, twelve, twelve.
Oh, it'd be eleven, twelve, twelve, okay.
Section two would count.
Oh, because in the total officers, the police chief would be included, okay.
Your second?
Please.
Any further discussion on it? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Three, two.
What's next? Nobody's going to do a first reading on it? Or second reading? Yes, ma'am.
I move that we have a first reading of ordinance 2171.
We had a first read.
Oh.
It was after the assignment of the number.
We hadn't filled anything in. Well, I guess we don't have to do.
The number, it's the numbers in the blanks that failed.
Ms. Balance.
May I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're in contact with our police chief. Do you have any idea if there is any number you would be willing to, to consider? Fifteen, twenty?
The current number he has now.
A million?
The current number he has now.
The current number he has now, he would be comfortable with that?
Apparently so, if that's the facts they gave you.
Okay, so, then I would move to fill in this, the first blank with nine, the second blank with ten, and the third blank with ten. If that's what he wants, I, I mean, really, I would... If he feels like he, if he feels like that is enough, then that's enough. I would not be averse to letting him have a few more in case the budget and his needs change within the next few years. And that way, the next council won't have such a huge burden of trying to, uh, change this up. I mean, golly, there's three whole numbers. It'd probably be a pretty difficult task for the people coming up. So, I wouldn't want to, of course, burden them with that. So, I guess, nine and ten and ten. If he would be comfortable with that, I'd be comfortable. I would move to put, let's see. Let's put 19 in the first blank, and 20 in the second blank, and 20 in the third blank.
Second.
Who will?
For convenience of later legislation, I would suggest that putting a number that's unrealistic in there at this time would be to set up a future council for violation of ordinance by allowing, when we do need 21, not remembering this ordinance exists.
Well, that's how we got from-- excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
This is how we got from, you know, four or five-- I don't know exactly how many, but I'm pretty sure 20 years ago, when we had more population and more tourism, we had less officers. Now, of course, we know the last mayor was the fire chief and the police chief's mother-in-law. And of course, she wanted them to do good, and so she gave them more, and of course--
What's your point of order, sir?
Why, was she talking about something that's irrelevant to this meeting right now?
You going to hold that up?
It is irrelevant.
Well, that's how we got from-- that's why our police department keeps growing and growing and growing. I feel like we need to-- I feel like it is the city council's responsibility to make sure we don't get too huge of a police department. And the police chief has told us right now, what he has is pretty sufficient, although I'm questioning whether he might want to add another one or two. And if he does, he probably has really good reasons.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer this to the first of the year, because we're going to be richest I'll make here, no matter what happens. And I just intend that the big council discusses ordinance.
Second.
Further discussion on it? Smalls.
If that is the will of the table, then I would like to move that, beginning now and into the future, that the budget be passed by ordinance.
There's already-- I move to move this to defer.
Can't make a motion.
We're going to have to wait until this motion's-- second.
Thank you.
All in favor of deferring to the first of the year? Next council.
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
No.
Three, two.
I would like to move that the budget be passed by ordinance.
Point of order. That's an agenda topic that should have been put on the agenda when the agenda was being established.
I'd like to suspend the orders, suspend the rules, and move that the ordinance be-- the budget be passed by ordinance in the future.
Second.
Was that pertinent at this time, or is it germane?
I don't think it fits with the proper order of the meeting at this point.
It indeed has something to do with this, because we are not, right now, passing our budget by ordinance. And it says that we shall set the state statute--
Point of order.
--that we shall set--
Point of order.
Point of order.
The topic was setting the number of police officers.
So if we're not doing it by general ordinance, then we need to pass our budgets by ordinance.
Ms. Smalls is trying to address a point of order here, so you need to hold off a second.
The topic was setting the police officers, and I stand by my assertion, if we're going to add items to the agenda, then it needs to be done in a proper fashion at the beginning of the meeting. That's in all due respect to the public.
Okay. We have a motion, it was made and passed, postponing the whole issue till the first of the year.
It was passed? I only heard three.
Three to two.
Seconded. He came, but I did not hear of that call. I did not hear the final vote called. So I presumed that I'd--
What was it?
The motion to defer to the first of the year was the last voted motion.
Yes.
Then you made a motion to suspend the rules. Ms. Lynn Bled seconded, and that's the only motion on the table at this time. And Mr. DeVito called.
They're going back, though, to whether the motion to defer received four votes or not, whether the mayor added a fourth vote.
He did not.
Well, that's because it wasn't asked. But yes, it will wait. I vote yes to wait till the first of the year, like the next council addresses.
Okay.
Does that take care of the whole issue?
That's all.
Okay. Move this on to new business. One, two, and three are deleted, raises the 2013 budget. Motion to discuss.
I thought that was deleted also.
No, no.
No?
Number four was deleted under unfinished. Number three was deleted for the budget resolution.
I'm going to discuss.
Second.
I don't have a copy of the 2013.
Okay, tell everybody here.
I've got it.
Should be titled November 29.
November 29.
2011.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Is there a second? Goodness, you leave a second. Okay, floor is open. Excuse me.
I'm mistaken, Mr. Mayor. In this budget, you're supposed to submit that to this council. The council is to approve it by January 31st. So usually, it's you that's taking up your January 31st.
Most of them.
I move to defer this to January 31st.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Smalls.
Yeah, I have some questions about the budget. Being on council now and getting the budget now, I'd like to have a couple of these questions answered without deferring it off to the next council.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm wondering why the police department is increasing their budget by 109,278 dollars from last year, which, as I said earlier, is $66,970 short of a $1 million budget. It's page 11. There was an article a couple of days ago, or a couple of weeks ago, in the paper that the Berryville Police Department is looking into hiring retired veterans, because they get a credit for hiring these retiring veterans. And they're working hard to lower their budget for their police department across the board. And it just seems like-- we just went through this long discussion about this ordinance that got-- didn't get passed, and controlling the police department through the budget. But, you know, we have a decreased population. We have less things going on in town now, and yet we keep increasing and increasing our police department budget, and I really don't get it. So do you have any answers to this?
Finance Director will address this issue.
Well, if you look at the-- of course, I will not try to change anything that the police chief submitted in his budget, but going over it. If you look at what the increases are, there's maintenance on the building, there's an increase there, and that's certainly understandable, as buildings grow older, they have to be repaired, floors have to be replaced and so forth. Then if you'll just run on down, there're just not any--
Can you give me the line item numbers, please?
Building maintenance is the first item. It's 12-55-11.
Okay. Page 10.
Do you have it?
I got it.
Do you have it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I suppose it would be better just to run down through there, and if you see things that you have questions about, I'll try to address those.
Well, if we have some pretty new police cars, the, you know, maintenance operation of vehicles is increased.
Well, last year, if you'll remember, the police car that was requested, which was on a rotating basis, the police car that was requested last year was denied. And so the entire fleet, apparently, is older, and from what I understand, it is costing more.
And the wages are being increased by 65, a little over $65,000 for salaries and wages.
There's not any new police officers in there, not that was said.
Okay, so this means that everybody in the police department's getting a raise?
There are some COLA increases in this budget, yes.
To the tune of $65,000? I don't know. I just think it's totally amazing that we have an almost $1 million police department budget for a town of decreasingly 2,000 people, even with the events that we have coming in here, and this budget just keeps increasing and increasing. I don't think this budget has decreased in years.
Well, I wouldn't anticipate the budget to decrease. I mean, nothing here that I know of has decreased substantially.
No, nothing is, but, you know, when the population is shrinking, it just seems like possibly there are places we could find to save some money on the police department, because the city can't just go on forever increasing the budget.
Well, we may have the-- you know, I can't really address the decreasing population, but it's my understanding from the statistics that I've been given that we have from 800 to 900,000 visitors to this city every year. And so you can't, or I can't, maybe other people can, but I can't equate just what we would need for the population of the city when we have so many people coming in.
Right.
And I mean, that's something--
No, I understand that. I've lived here a long time.
I personally can't, you know, and I can't tell you every line item, and I know--
Well, not very many of them increased.
--discuss the building maintenance with the chief of police, and certainly, that's an order. You know, there's only a slight increase in the equipment maintenance.
Yeah, I see. What buildings is this, for the police department building?
Yes.
Only?
As far as I know.
Okay. Now, I guess that's all the questions I have.
But this budget is based on anticipated revenues, and there's-- the revenues are sufficient to cover the budget in the general fund.
Mr. Ruffin.
Is it correct that city employees haven't received a raise in two years, a COLA raise?
That's my understanding. I know they didn't receive one last year. I don't know about previously.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good way to keep qualified employees, is to give them COLA raises.
Ms. DeVito.
Yeah, it wasn't too many years ago, we were losing-- I mean, you get qualified people, you train them to do the job, and then Springdale, Fayetteville, or Rogers picks them up. And that was the scenario, both with our teachers also. It was the scenario 15 or 20 years ago. We were losing, you know, one or two seemed like every year. Anybody that runs a business with more than one employee understands that one of the largest impacts on any business is the cost of employees, and that's just the nature of the beast. It's usually one of the largest expenditures that any business faces, and the police force is not unlike any other business.
Anybody else?
I don't think this is the time to do a mid-year budget review, to go through this where there's really nothing we can do about it. I mean, hopefully, we can put our hopes to the next council, is all I can say. I'm a little embarrassed that we didn't handle it properly, and would like to apologize publicly to the citizens of this city. We should have handled this earlier.
We just got it. How could we?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how we could handle it earlier when we just got it.
Mr. Berry.
I think I have a motion to move this to January. To the answer that we could always-- we tried to work with the resolution that we were given, and we haven't passed it yet.
All right.
So I still hope by my motion, I think we're pushing on to defer it to January.
Okay, would you restate the motion?
To defer to the first meeting in January, and Mr. DeVito seconded.
Further discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Aye.
Ms. Smalls?
Five, zero.
Okay. Next will be number five, a resolution to end the moratorium on category 199.
Second.
Floor is open.
Motion, three, four, three.
We will have to take this resolution, give it a number.
Did you pass-- take one and pass this, please?
And that will pretty much take care of that issue. Give it a number and pass it.
Come on, ladies.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to sign a number, a new resolution to defer this budget.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Yes, we had given--
Six or none, I think it was.
Right, so I'm going to jump to six, 10, then.
Six, 10.
The resolution number will be six, 10.
Resolution number six, 1, 0. A resolution ending a moratorium on the issuance of business licenses under the line item 199, all services and businesses not otherwise listed. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed weekly rentals and other short-term rentals, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the moratorium on line item 199 business licenses under code section 4.36.04 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby ended.
Motion approved on the resolution number six, 1, 0.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Yes, we had given--
Six or none, I think it was.
Right, so I'm going to jump to six, 10, then.
Six, 10.
The resolution number will be six, 10.
Resolution number six, 1, 0. A resolution ending a moratorium on the issuance of business licenses under the line item 199, all services and businesses not otherwise listed. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed weekly rentals and other short-term rentals, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the moratorium on line item 199 business licenses under code section 4.36.04 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby ended.
Motion approved on the resolution number six, 1, 0.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be a real calm, okay. Let's get back.
Ms. Smalls?
Aye.
Mr. Berry? Ms. Balance?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. Moves us on to number six, the parking lot lease for two thousand and thirteen. If you'd like to have a copy of the proposed resolution. Basically, the same thing as was last year.
And hopefully yours has number two up in the right-hand corner.
This basically is a city in agreement with Carroll County to release the, re-lease the parking lot, or lease again, the parking lot on both sides of the courthouse. So, a motion to discuss. Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to assign this resolution a number and place it for discussion.
Second. We need a second to discuss? Yes, we need a second for discussion.
I have it.
You have it? Okay, sorry. All right. All right. Now, we're gonna sign the number. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Because we were using six oh nine for something that has been deleted, uh, six oh nine was going to be used for the budget resolution. I will go to double back and use six oh nine.
Is that kosher?
Are you sure that will leave the confusion, I think?
Should just move to six twelve.
Uh, no.
But I think in the past, what would happen if one was skipped that way, was simply the record book would be noted as that number was not used, and then use it further down the number.
Well, if you'd feel more comfortable with that, I'm happy to do it.
That might be more appropriate, since, since six oh nine appears in the agenda as being something else, doesn't it?
I don't think it's actually on the agenda, but I, that works for me. I'm happy to give it a new number and just say six oh nine was not used.
Okay.
Okay, six eleven. Reson, resolution six one one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk treasurer of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to execute that certain instrument consisting of two typewritten sheets and denominated as Carroll County Western District Courthouse Parking Lot Lease Agreement by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, lesey, lessy. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the mayor and city clerk, clerk treasurer of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, are hereby authorized to execute that certain instrument consisting of two typewritten sheets and denominated as Carroll County Western District Courthouse Parking Lot Lease Agreement by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor- And the city- That word was taken out.
Judge was taken.
Oh, I have a wrong version. I don't have a newer version. I do?
That was the only deletion.
They threw you one over. That was in the church.
Okay, well, go ahead.
To lease the following described property, the existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse located at forty-four South Main Street, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Such parking lots presently occupying the property directly north, east, and south of said courthouse, and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, First Street, and curbs respectively, for a term of one year commencing on January one, two thousand and thirteen, and ending at midnight on December thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen, a copy of said instrument being attached heretofore.
Ms. Lynn Bled.
Well, I have no copy of anything attached to either of the copies that I have of this, so I have no idea what this agreement even looks like.
This is the agreement.
It says, yeah, but it doesn't say anything about money. Isn't there money involved here?
We leased the lot.
Yeah, so we pay the money, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, there's no, there's nothing on here that says anything about it, so I don't know how I'm supposed to vote on it. I don't even know what it is.
Dan, do you remember the lease amount?
Yes.
And it says right there, a copy of said instrument being attached here, too.
The two thousand. This is the agreement.
Why were we not given this?
'Cause we have to have the resolution done, for me to go get with the county and get it done.
No, I understand that, but when it says right here, a copy of said instrument being attached here, too, it seems like this is what was supposed to be attached to it.
It's been the same agreement since two thousand and eight. Is that correct, Dan? Since two thousand and eight?
Thanks.
Same agreement, amount-wise and word-wise in the agreement. If you want a copy, we can make copies.
Yeah, I'd like to have a copy of it. I don't need it right now. Want to see this?
Yeah.
Infer discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Real call.
No one's made a motion to accept it yet.
I thought we did.
Just to sign a number and read it.
Move to approve, uh, resolution six one one.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? Okay, be a real call, both.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Epstein.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
Epstein.
Three, zero, two.
Yes.
Four, zero, two.
Okay, that moves us on to number seven, the discussion of the joint audit.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. Yes, ma'am.
In the interest of informing the public, I'd like to let the public know that in two thousand and eleven, the expenditures from the general fund exceeded the revenues by four hundred and one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. In two thousand and ten, the expenditures in the general budget expended, exceeded the revenues by four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. In two thousand and nine, the expenditures for the general budget exceeded the revenues by one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And in two thousand and eight, the expenditures in the general budget exceeded the revenues by four hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. So, dating back to two thousand and eight, the expenditures for the general budget have exceeded the revenues by one million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. I hope that our next council will have at least some members on them, on it, who will kind of keep an eye on this and, and keep trying to have us not overspending our general budget revenues every year, year after year after year, 'cause that money's gotta be coming from somewhere. That probably means maybe our revenues are, I mean, maybe our reserves are dropping, maybe our CDs are being cashed in, I don't know for sure, because, uh, this coming year, last year, we had about ten thousand dollars, a ten thousand dollars budgeted for interest off our CDs, and this year, we have about three thousand dollars budgeted for revenue from our CDs. So, either the, uh, interest rates have dropped really a lot, or we're cash-